All of the North Plains Planning Commission for April the ninth to order at six o'clock. For his ride.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. We are to declare other, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Chair King.
Here.
Commissioner House.
Here.
Commissioner Conadell.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
He's out of town, so.
So he may join us, I'll keep an eye on him.
If he doesn't, please excuse me.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Para.
Here.
Commissioner Nunenkamp.
Here.
And Commissioner Labonte is excused. Your ex officio this evening is Counselor Trista Payton.
Alright, thank you. Item number four is public comments. This time is available for anyone in the audience or Zoom wishing to speak on planning commission business that is not on the agenda. Is there anyone? Anyone on Zoom?
Oh yes.
No hands? Okay, left record show that there's no one in the audience on Zoom for public comments. Okay, item number five is approval of the minutes for March the twelfth. Does anyone have any changes, corrections? I just had mentioned before that you have ex officio Counselor Aaron Dunbar.
I had him backwards on two different meetings, yes, so I will get that corrected.
Needs to be Katie.
Yep.
Counselor Redding.
I will get that corrected.
Thank you. If there's no other corrections, I'll entertain motion.
I'm going to approve the minutes from March 12th with the correction of the ex officio as it stands.
Second. It's moved by Commissioner Nunenkamp, seconded by Commissioner Conadell for approval of the March 12th minutes with minor correction of the ex officio. But is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. So the both minutes are approved. Okay, item number six is, excuse me, six A is a public hearing. This is a quasi judicial public hearing for extension twenty-five oh-two Frank's excavation. After you please give us the procedure on the public hearing.
I apologize for that. The, open top, there you go. The North Plains Planning Commission will conduct a quasi judicial public hearing on file EXT twenty-five dash zero-two Frank's excavation. The order of business will be as follows. The Commission Chair will open the public hearing and ask for declarations of conflict of interest, expartee contact, or personal bias. The Commission Chair will request the staff report. The commissioners may ask questions at any time during the public hearing. Any written correspondence submitted on behalf of the subject application will be orally presented, including the individual's name and address. The applicant will be invited to present oral testimony first. The public will be invited to provide oral testimony and written testimony on the proposed land use extension, first by proponents, then opponents, followed by those individuals who are neutral. Additional staff comments will then be presented. If opposing testimony is presented, the applicant will be provided an opportunity for rebuttal. Opponents will also be provided an opportunity to speak in regards to the rebuttal. The Commission Chair will call for commission comments and discussion. The Commission Chair will close the public hearing or continue the hearing to a specific time and date. If the Commission Chair closes the public hearing, a decision will then be entered by the Planning Commission. A decision will be entered into a final findings of fact, which will then be mailed with a letter detailing the decision to all parties to the proceedings. Appeals of a land use decision must be received by the city recorder within fifteen days following the date the decision is mailed to the parties. All persons testifying shall be deemed parties to the proceeding and must provide their name and full mailing address or email address. Parties will be notified of the decision, continuances, appeals, or other procedural actions required by the code and state law. The city municipal code zoning and development standards specifies applicable criteria to be relied upon in making a decision. Those criteria and findings of fact are in the city staff report. Public testimony should be limited to those criteria and findings of fact or to other city or state land use standards that the person testifying believes apply to the proposed land use action. Failure to raise an issue in person or in writing with sufficient detail to afford the hearing body and parties to the hearing an opportunity to respond to that issue precludes appeal to the city council or land use board or to seek damages to the Washington County Circuit Court due to a condition of approval.
Alright, so I mentioned this is a quasi judicial public hearing and we will be either making a decision or continuing. So we will. The public hearing at six oh seven? Okay. Excuse me. Are there any commissioners who wish to declare any conflict of interest, expartee contact, or bias? Hearing done, is there anyone in the audience that challenges any of the commissioners to hear this case? Hearing none, could I please get the staff report, agency comments, and recommendations?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Sorry for the interruption.
No problem.
But we'll be turning this over to our assistant panel, and so, well, go ahead and take your way.
Good evening Chair and Commissioners, thank you. Okay, this is a presentation on extension twenty-five zero zero-two concerning a previous design review approval for Frank's excavating. Side please. The applicant's request is for an extension to design review twenty-four dash oh oh-one Frank's excavating approval. This was presented to you last at your April tenth, twenty twenty-four meeting and was made final on April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. An extension to this approval would last one year period until April thirty, twenty twenty-six. The applicable zoning and development code section is one five five dot oh one oh termination approvals and extensions. Side please. A quick reminder on the approval. This is a vicinity map. The subject property is a parcel along Northwest West Union Road directly next to the Kendall Public Services Building and across the street from Northwest Stewart Lane. The subject property will be a host to a shop and yard and will take access from the property to the west, which is also host to a single family home. This is a quick reminder of the site plan which was approved back in last April. As mentioned, you can see the accessway on the neighboring property, which will also result in the removal of the current driveway on that property. The access will serve a front-facing parking lot, a shop and office building, and the remaining portion of the property will be a loading and material storage yard, as well as equipment storage, and a stormwater facility in the southeast corner of the property. Some contributing factors to this extension request. The approval was made final April thirtieth of twenty twenty-four, which is well into the building season in Oregon. Land use approval is the very first step in getting a development done. So the subsequent permitting includes engineering review, county permit, some additional permits with CWS, TBFNR, and other agencies. We are well aware of the fact that Washington County and our own engineering review can take many months, often exceeding six months in time, and that land use approvals in the current building season are often unable to make substantial progress within that that building season due to the length of time that they need in order to get permitted. Our approval period of one year for the ZDC is short compared to other jurisdictions in the Washington County area. Beaverton, Hillsborough both have multiple year approvals, and that is common practice in the area considering the length of Oregon's building season and the considerable length of the permitting process in Oregon. Based on those contributing factors, staff have really deemed this to be beyond the control of the applicant. The duration of approval was insufficient to make significant process, and we've seen evidence from the applicant that they are working diligently to get these permits done and make significant progress in this building season as we roll into it. It simply wasn't possible in the last building season. Next slide please. So with that said, staff are recommending approval of an extension to DR twenty-four dash oh oh-one Frank's excavating for a one-year period to make substantial construction progress and establish the use. Questions?
First of all, I just noticed here it says owner is Floyd and Mary Anne Van Damme. That's apparently not correct. Is there a reason that wasn't updated?
Yes, that owner is the owner of the property to the west, which is where they take access.
But they're not the owner of the application of the property.
But they are a party to the application because their property is being utilized for access to.
Do they own the property we're talking about? Do they own the property?
They own one of the properties that we are talking about.
They own the property.
Yeah, I know.
It is part of the application, yes.
When that happens, you become a party to the application.
But they're not the owner of the lot that we're talking about.
They were the owner, I believe they recently sold it.
That's what I'm just saying, they're not the owner, so it probably shouldn't reflect the correct owner, but.
The owner is listed under the applicant Frank Cam.
Okay. Also, if you can, can you refresh my memory on page twenty of the report? Of the package, the requirement for the minimum of twenty-eight automobile spaces. We recall why there's so many required.
The required parking spaces were reviewed with the original design review application and were found to be sufficient.
But it says they're required, I'm just wondering why twenty-eight?
Oh, this is the conditions of approval. These conditions of approval are directly from the design review application.
Right.
And this is a, these conditions are provided by our engineer Brian Feeney. This is really restating the already provided plans.
So in other words, you can't tell me why?
No, I think what we're trying to tell you, Chair King, is that this is what was proposed by.
No, I understand, I understand that. Excuse me, no, let me finish. I understand that. The question is, if you don't know why the minimum of twenty-eight, you say, I don't know why it is, that's just the information that was passed along.
I have a better answer for you though. This is what was proposed by the applicant. They proposed the amount of parking. It does exceed the minimum requirement that is for this type of use, but this is what they proposed and they felt was sufficient for their needs at this site. We do not have a maximum threshold for parking. We have a minimum standard, and they've exceeded that.
Okay, but it says required.
Yes, so the conditions of approval here for a cert certificate of occupancy are ensuring that the parking spaces are are installed as depicted in the plans that were approved.
Yeah. So it's required because of the plan, then, I mean the plan.
Correct, as approved.
Thank you. Commissioner Conadell, excuse me, Conadell, any questions?
No.
Commissioner How? Measure Para?
No.
Commissioner Nunenkamp?
No.
Alright, is the applicant here?
Yes, we're online.
Well, they can't come forward, so I guess they can.
Yeah, hello? I'm the, this is Ben Millie, I'm the civil engineer on the project, representing the applicants. Yeah, I just like to say my client is, they've been proceeding with good faith and they have been, you know, navigating the Washington County permit process as well as clean water services process. And they are excited to get started on this project.
Okay, is there any questions of the applicant? Hearing none, thank you sir. Okay, are there any proponents, people who wish to testify in favor of? I see none in the audience. Is there anyone on Zoom?
No, not seeing any right now, and so.
But the record show there's no proponents. Are there any opponents, people wishing to testify against? See none in the audience, any on Zoom? They let the record show there's no opponent. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Public hearing at six seventeen. There's no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Take a motion to extend DR dash twenty-four dash zero zero one, one year.
Second. It's been moved by Commissioner Conadell, seconded by Commissioner Nunenkamp for approval of extension twenty-five dash zero-two Frank's excavation for a period of one year. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Anonymous, thank you. Okay, move on to item six B, second public hearing. This is a legislative public hearing, and we will be making recommendation to city council. So if we could please get the process for the legislative public hearing?
Thank you. The North Plains Planning Commission will conduct a legislative public hearing regarding file TA dash twenty-five zero zero-one Flood Plane Code text amendment. The order of business will be as follows. The Commission Chair will open the public hearing and request the staff report. The commissioners may ask questions at any time during the public hearing. Any written correspondence submitted on behalf of this item will be presented orally, including the individual's name and address. The public will be invited to provide oral or written testimony on the proposed Flood Plane Code text amendment. Additional staff comments will then be presented. The Commission Chair will call for commission comments and discussion. The Commission Chair will then close the public hearing or continue the hearing to a specific time and date. All persons testifying shall be deemed parties to the proceeding and must provide their name and full correct mailing address, or if preferred, their email address. Parties will be notified of the decision, continuances, appeals, or other procedural actions required by the code and state law. The city municipal code zoning and development standards specify applicable criteria to be relied upon in making a decision. Those criteria and findings of fact are in the city staff report. Public testimony should be limited to those criteria and findings of fact or to other city or state land use standards that the person testifying believes applies to the proposed code text amendment. Failure to raise an issue in person or in writing with sufficient detail to afford the hearing body and the parties to the hearing an opportunity to respond to that issue precludes appeal to the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals.
Thank you. Twenty-two, open the public hearing at six twenty, or TA twenty-five dash zero zero-one Flood Plane Code text amendment. Staff, your report?
Yeah, thanks Chair King. What brings us here tonight is a result of a lawsuit between the Portland Autobahn Society and the Federal Emergency Management Agency in regards to how FEMA was implementing the National Flood Plane Insurance Program. And so I'm going to go through a brief presentation. Some of you folks have already seen this here in the planning commission, but for the benefit of the audience members and those on the Zoom call, we'll go through it one more time. And we also have the city's legal counsel here to help us with any questions that you folks may have as well. So how did we get here? Back in two thousand nine to two thousand ten, as I indicated FEMA was sued by the Autobahn Society for implementing the National Flood Plane Insurance Program, and that it was jeopardizing the existence of endangered species. As a result of that lawsuit, the Autobahn Society won, and that required FEMA to go back and kind of reevaluate how they were implementing the flood plane program, so they could try to address the impacts on the endangered species. Excuse me. In twenty sixteen, the National Marine Fisheries issued a bio finding that FEMA did jeopardize the existence of the sixteen endangered species. All, they're all anadromous fish, if you will, which are fish that spawn in rivers and then spend their life raising in the ocean and come back and spawn back in the river like a salmon or a steelhead, lamprey, things of that nature, and it also was impacting the southern resident killer whales. And so as a result of that finding, FEMA was required to go out and come up with a solution to that. And what FEMA ultimately did is they established this program in twenty twenty-four called PICMS, and I'll go through that here in just a moment. But that is the program that every jurisdiction that was impacted by this ruling needed to adopt some new rules into their code to try to address the impacts on the endangered species. And this is just to show you how broad the impact was from this ruling. It effectively covered three quarters of the state. So anything that flows back to the ocean and anything that flows into the Columbia River ultimately was a jurisdiction that had to update their code to address these results. For North Plains, this is the area that was impacted, and so everything that's inside the red border here is the impacted area. We do have some areas shown outside of the city limits. Those folks are in Washington County, and so they were not provided notice of this particular situation because they're not city property. But we notified over a hundred and twenty folks, that's how many people live in this little area here. And we did receive some phone calls from people who received those letters. They had some general questions. We answered their questions, and I do believe some of them are here today in attendance. So PICMS stands for the Pre-Implementation Compliance Measures, and these were interim measures to implement what came out of the lawsuit, which is a no net loss standard. And so when you build into the floodplain now, what the standard means is you need to address those impacts. You have to mitigate for your impacts going into the floodplain, so you can maintain the habitat to protect the endangered species. All the PICMS that were provided to us, except for one, they gave us three, two of them required a text amendment. One was kind of a do nothing type of a standard, and that one had some negative implications. If we chose not to bring these standards into our code, it would impact the property owner's ability to get flood insurance. So that was why this was very critical to the city, to get this updated, so everybody who has flood insurance can maintain their flood insurance. And so that is the goal of the PICMS, is to stop further degradation of the floodplain habitat and to track the modifications to the floodplain. So we do have to do some tracking with this now to FEMA to let them know what is occurring in the state of North Plains in terms of floodplain development. And right now, you know, there's really not a lot to report because we haven't, we haven't received any applications for floodplain development. And so these were the three choices that we had to choose from. One was a prohibition. That's the one that would not have required a text amendment, but it also would have pulled us out of compliance with FEMA and the National Flood Insurance Program, and so we did not want to go that route. So that was really a nonstarter. Excuse me, let me correct myself a little bit. We would be out of compliance with the state law. But again, it was really a nonstarter for us to prohibit development in the floodplain. We need to address that and a better, and a better option. The other choice was a permit by permit basis, which that one was a little more stringent on the city. We don't have the technical expertise to review these type of biological studies to be able to come up with a conclusion that there would be no net loss, and so there was a lot of conversation about that particular option and how we might be able to go that route. We worked with the county, we worked with other jurisdictions to see what their strategies were, and what we started to learn was this was a very challenging option for every jurisdiction to try to address. And so the really only option that we found viable for the state of North Plains was the model code. And in our conversations with legal counsel and other jurisdictions, this seems to be the preferred option for just about everybody. With that being said, there are jurisdictions that are a little more impacted by these new rules than than others, particularly those jurisdictions that are on the coast. And so they are challenging some of the abilities of FEMA to actually implement this. And I'm not sure where that sits right now. I know there's some challenges that are occurring, and who knows where that goes. But in order for us to stay in compliance, we wanted to continue forward. And so the model ordinance, what the city has proposed is to amend the Flood Plane Code using the twenty 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 Oregon Flood Plane Model Flood Management Ordinance, and that from the document that I shared with everybody is the bulk of the text amendment. And what that does is it brings in some clear and objective standards, and it also changes some of the definitions. But the one thing that it holds true that the previous code did is to make sure that all development that occurs in the floodplain is done to the current building code standards. That's a large part of our floodplain overlay zone is the building code standards, where you need to have your first habitable floor elevated a foot above the floodplain elevation. You need to have your water heaters, other things like that also elevated, so if a flood does come, you're safe. Your, all your habit, your living space is out of that floodplain area. The other component that comes into this though is also the FEMA model code language. And what that will do is it will modernize our floodplain code to not only be more in compliance with state law, but also with the federal law now. And so what that does is the last section of the portion of the code that we're talking about adopting is the no net loss section. That's the FEMA section, so ninety percent of it is the Oregon model code. The last section is the FEMA section for no net loss. As far as the consequences go, all floodplain themselves will be reviewed pursuant to the new code. So once this code is adopted and in place, if anybody would like to come forward and do development in the floodplain, this would be the code that regulates that type of development. Again, though, if you do nothing, then you won't be impacted. And so the current status of the program, we needed to choose what route we were going to go by December first of last year, and the council and the planning commission both chose to go forward with the model code option. So we did send that into FEMA by that deadline, letting know that that was the direction we were going to go. We have begun some data collection, but at this time, there's really, like I indicated, there's no floodplain development, so there's not a lot of data to collect at the moment, but that is something that we do need to report to FEMA on an annual basis. And then what we do need to do though is have whatever codes we were going to adopt in place by July thirty-first, twenty-five. And so that's why we're here now, before you, is to try and make sure that we can meet that deadline to get the new code in place. And so in terms of the next steps, assuming that there's not a continuance of this. And so in terms of the next steps, assuming that there's not a continuance of this meeting tonight. And the planning commission makes a recommendation to the city council, we will move forward to our first reading with the city council on April twenty first. We will hold the second reading on May fifth with adoption around June fourth. And so that would put us in compliance with the federal rules of having the new code in place by July thirty first twenty twenty five. Any questions?
Can you come forward?
Come forward?
No, excuse me. Does any of the planning commissioners have any questions? Commissioner Hau? Commissioner, kind of no?
Don't.
Okay, please come forward.
Hi.
Please come forward.
Right here.
Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Dee Rice from North Plains, three zero five zero zero northwest, three hundred and six happening.
Any other question?
I own a home. Am I in the floodplain? And what if I wanted to refinance? Is that going to? Change what I need to do with my hot water heater or anything else?
As I indicated, the the main reason, in addition to complying with the federal rules for doing this, is to make sure that you can continue to get your flood insurance. So we're still going to be part of that program in terms of refinancing. It should have no impact. You know, but again, you'll need to talk with your lender.
Okay, thanks.
There anyone else wishing to testify? Please come forward. You can pull up a chair and sit down.
Marilyn McLean. I live at one oh seven five four Northwest McCain Creek Court. And I want to know, how do we know if we're in the floodplain? I don't even know.
Did you receive a letter from us?
I did receive that.
You're in the floodplain.
Okay, so what does that mean for insurance? Because we have never had one insurance.
I mean, that's a really great question. I would imagine that your lender would have brought that to your attention when you were purchasing the home, that there was a floodplain there for you to address, because that's usually where it comes up in the purchasing process. But as far as. That goes, I'm not, I can't really provide you advice on that. But what I can say is by adopting these rules and having them in place, it will allow you to continue to get flood insurance. So if you would like to get it, I mean, the way your home could be built is this outside of the floodplain. You have floodplain on your property, but maybe your home is outside.
I believe our house is actually outside of the floodplain. Because we've never been, we've refinanced a couple of times and it never was brought to our attention. So it could be beyond that.
And when those things happen, they usually do reach out to the local jurisdictions with questions. And and you know, for your property, I've not received anybody asking those questions.
And I will need both of you to fill out one of those cards so that we can send you a notification.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify? Is there anyone on Zoom?
Seen anybody tricking?
Let the record show there's no one on Zoom. There anything else you want to add?
There is one thing I would like to add, and we do have legal counsel here that can provide some additional feedback on that. But. In the portion of the code that has to do with addressing the no net loss standards. There's still some research being done as to whether or not all of those standards are clear and objective for residential development. And so. If it's commercial development or industrial development, it doesn't matter. It can be, it can be something other than clear and objective. Whereas residential development, all standards have to be clear and objective for that type of development. Legal counsel has been looking through those standards to see if there's something that might need to be adjusted, and they've not had enough time to completely vet all of that. And so there is a chance that we may have to come back later this year with a small amendment to that. End section for the no net loss standard for residential development to make sure that is clear and objective. Given the current status of the city, though, with the UGB expansion being a little stuck at the moment and not moving forward. And all the other floodplain properties in the city that are residential currently being developed to one level or another. We're not anticipating much risk from this, and that we will be able to get anything that needs to be updated done in a timely manner. So it would not be an issue. So I just want to bring that to your attention that there, at once all this is vetted. And we haven't had a short time to get this to you, as you know, to get to this July thirty first deadline. There could be a final tweak that we have to do later this year.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Conadel? Okay.
That's just all right. Thank you, Steve. I just wanted to add to that to say, yes, I think the the primary reason for wanting to. Adopt the model code right now is just to meet that FEMA deadline, the stated deadline of July thirty first twenty twenty five. And then any other minor amendments that we have for you, you know, that way we have a little bit more flexibility. In the timeline of implementing those, we can take our time to fully review the code language and come to you with strategic edits. I was going to add one other just minor comment. I heard Steve say that there was potentially a lawsuit happening, and there is. That's the coalition or it's a coalition that's called Oregonians for Flood Plane Protection. And so as Steve said, that was a few cities on the coast, but it's also. A bunch of different cities and counties throughout Oregon, and they're suing in D C District Court. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Conadel, are you ready to move forward? Any questions? Commissioner Hau? No. Commissioner Par? No question. Commissioner None again? No. I will be looking for the recommendation for approval. This will be in the form of recommendation to city council.
Make a recommendation if we. Forward to the city council. The TA twenty five dash one. And. Going to do the TA twenty five zero zero one. Both of them? It'd be two, I guess.
Just the one.
Just the one.
Twenty five zero zero one floodplain code text amendment.
Recommend that.
All right, it's been moved by Commissioner Conadel and seconded by Commissioner Hau for approval of. To recommend approval to the city council for TA twenty five dash zero zero one floodplain code text amendment. Is there any discussion being done? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So the both. Motion is carried. Okay, good. Move on to item number seven as unfinished business.
Yes, thank you, Chair King. Got a few things to share with you. At the last meeting we had, there was a discussion about the one acre parcel in the Sunset Ridge subdivision. And I have gone back and had a few discussions with the city legal council about that property. We've ducked through the master plan approval. The subdivision approvals, the development agreements and whatnot. And after reviewing all those documents, the conclusion was made that. That property is protected through the master plan to be developed as a mixed-use property. And there's no limitation on that. It is essentially approved as part of the master plan to be that type of property for that type of development. So unlike the two acre property that was in. Brinhale that had kind of an expiration date on that property to where it could be converted into something else after some building permits were signed off for the phase that it was in. That's not the case for this one acre property, because those rules were not in place at that time. And so the only way that this property could be developed was something other than a mixed-use development is somebody would have to come in and do an amendment to the master plan. To get it to be developed for something other than a mixed-use development at this time. So that property essentially is protected through the master plan approval. Is there any questions on that? Or have you? Another thing I'd like to bring to your attention is the T G M grant that we applied for for the for the code update. We were not successful in receiving that grant. And one of the things that was brought to our attention is, you know, we do have the T G M grant right now for the concept planning work. And. The state is not certain if we are moving on this. And we do have some timelines that we have to meet to spend those dollars. And and that goes into twenty six, but we've had some benchmarks that we've had to meet right now that have not been met. And so there's a little concern. At the state level as to whether or not we can perform. And so it's impacting our ability to receive dollars for other projects. And so that's a big concern for us. And so we are talking with ODOT right now. And we are talking with D L C D. They understand that this is an important project for us. And so we are trying to get back in with them to see if there's a way to try and. Continue to get our code updated through a T G M grant. But I do want to let you know that. The impact of not making decisions is starting to impact our abilities to move other things forward for the city. And we knew need to start demonstrating that we're doing something and and they're paying attention. So I just want to bring that to your attention. It's very disappointing that. We lost this grant. And I think Rowan has something that they'd like to share with you as well.
I'll just add that in the response from T G M, they. Exercised a lot of effort in emphasizing that we have all the characteristics that they are looking for to fund. There are just a few pinch points, one of which is that the department has less funding and less staff than they expected. And so the the criteria did rise higher. And the other is that they are, as Steve mentioned. Not in full faith of our ability to move forward at this point. But we were highly encouraged if we can get moving on our current T G M grant with concept planning, if we can show forward movement. On the processes that we've committed to, that we have all the characteristics to be in line to continue this partnership with them and to get more funding. So it's definitely not out of the picture. It's something that we're going to continue to keep in contact with and really continue to pursue. Our relationship with T G M has been very fruitful, had a really good working relationship with them. So it's something we we really want to continue if possible.
Thank you. Any questions on that?
Yeah, I think actually some of us have been talking about trying to move forward with. Some of these things. And you you guys keep saying we should sit on our hands and wait until we get the grant.
No, I think we we really thought we were in a good position to get this money. So it was a bit of a shock when they told us that we didn't get it. And some of the reasons where they gave us were a little contradictory to what they told us on the front end when we were going into this. So it shocked us a little bit to hear the rationale. But yeah, absolutely. It changes the conversation now, hundred percent. And so I I think that'll be, you know, part of the discussion going forward is what what do we do? And I don't think you're seeing anybody sit on their hands. I think you're trying to see people use resources efficiently to get the biggest bang for the effort.
I was saying, you're sitting there, you're standing, we've been asking to be able to change some things. And and then we've been saying, let's wait. Until we get the grant money to do anything. And it's like, let's get it done.
I think those will be the new conversations going forward. Absolutely. And to that end, to to that whole end of the end game, right? May fourteenth will be an opportunity for the planning commission to reconvene with the city council to have these type of conversations, right? To talk about the rack, the effort that they put in, the work that they brought forward, their their recommendations, their findings and so forth, since. We were not able to give you that opportunity in the previous joint work session just due to time limitations. So we're going to bring everybody back together. The beauty of that is that's the only agenda item on the May fourteenth agenda right now. So it won't be a work session that happens prior to your meeting. It'll be a work session in the meeting. And so you'll be able to have as much time as you need to ask all the questions that you would like to ask. And I think that'll be a benefit for everybody. I I think it will help staff quite a bit to get a better understanding of where we're going and what the priorities are. What the city would like to accomplish and how we can help make that happen. Because that's what we're here for. We're here to work for the planning commission and the city council and bring your guys' objectives and goals to fruition. And so that's what we're kind of waiting for a little bit is to get a better understanding of what are those, you know, and and what would you like us to do? For you to to make the city look and operate the way you would like to have it done. And so I really look forward to that May fourteenth work session. I think it's going to be very productive.
The last meeting, you said you weren't here for us. You said you had to ask city council to be able to do anything for the planning commission if we asked to do anything. So it wasn't, that wasn't what the answer was last meeting. If we asked to do anything in the meeting, you said you had to ask the council.
Hundred percent. That's exactly what we'll be. And you guys can start that conversation. Hey, city council, I believe we have a code that really needs to be addressed. Should we move staff into that area and start putting the resources into that and having them do that would be a great question.
We could save it for months.
Question.
For months.
Great question.
About things we need to change.
And I understand that. And I think what you saw is an effort by staff to try and come up with a way to address that in a really comprehensive manner. By trying to go getting grant dollars that would not just address a little one-off here or one-off there. It would be a comprehensive code rewrite. To address all the concerns that not only the planning commission has, but anybody in the city, right? I mean, it would have been a fully open project that we would have had many different meetings on. To see how that code would evolve.
But now we applied for a grant, then we get we're we're months and months down the road again. So.
I guess my only question to you, Commissioner Nodell, where are people developing in the city right now?
Well, they're not. And that the whole point is let's not wait till development happens.
And so we're trying to take advantage of getting that done now before before something happened. That's why we're trying to comprehensively move. The U G B, the concept planning and the code update as a comprehensive package through the process. So when the U G B came in, we were ready. Now we're going to do it a little bit differently, right? We got to, we got to pivot a little bit here. Those dollars are not provided to us. I don't believe that we have the staff capacity to do that type of comprehensive code update, but we can certainly go in and address. How you would like to see mixed-use development happen in the N C zone. Definitely, we can do that.
There any other unfinished business?
That's it for now.
Okay, we'll move on to item number eight is new business. Any new business for the planning commission?
New business is May fourteenth.
Okay. Move on to item nine is the building permits and the city project report, monthly report from three J. Any questions, comments on any of those?
Go ahead. What I was going to say is. When you're looking at the three J report, if you do have any questions on the three J report, it'd be helpful if you could let me know before the meeting. Because I would either want to ask Brian to show up so he's available to answer your questions. Or try to get him to provide me with an answer so I can answer your questions. And so anything that has to do with engineering type of work in the city. If you have questions on that, please let me know in advance so I can help you.
Can you look?
And that goes for anything else too. If you guys have questions on anything that you would like to have addressed in the planning commission meetings, please let me know in advance so I can prepare for it.
So on building permits, can you on your laptop look if I gave you the address and tell you if there's a permit taken?
If you would like to come in, I'm more than happy to work with you.
No, no, no. If I if I like tonight, if I said, is there a permit taken on this property in the city that they're working on right now? Is, can you look? Can you tell if there was a?
If there is a building permit, it sounds like.
They would have had to come to you first before they took the permit to Washington County, correct? Come on, I haven't seen it, but there's a.
Yes, they are supposed to start with the city. And then we do the initial review to see if there are any issues with our codes. And then if everything's good with our codes, then they go to the county to actually get the permit. With that being said. People will do things without permits that happens.
Huge remodel going on in the house. I mean.
Where is it at?
Three one eight eight, three one eight nine nine Wattsco. Like a twenty by twenty. Patio in the back, a patio in the front, new new electrical. I mean, it's massive.
Okay.
I don't see it when I drive by. I usually have the permit posted. I don't see one. I've never seen it. But I've never seen it here.
No, what I what we can do is we'll run back with Washington County. I I have not seen anything. I can tell you that. I've not seen.
I just know when I get online with the structural and everything I had to do. It doesn't. It's not even close structurally to what I put up with. It's not even close structurally to what I put up with. So I'm just interested to know that somebody's. I mean, it, it's a bunch of remodel.
No, I will look into that. Like I said, we will follow up with the county to see if maybe they issued a permit without checking with us first. I mean, they're supposed to have, they're pretty good at it. I'll tell you, the county is, the county has sent people that we don't even need to help to us. So they've been pretty good at sending everybody my way. This one did not come my way. And so there's either one or two things. The county. Forgot to tell them that they needed to come my way, or they're going without permits. And so if they are going without permits, we will rely on the county a little bit to help enforce that because they are our building department. So thank you for bringing that to my attention.
Yeah, one question I have about the building permits is, this is apparently all the March. Building permits, and they see none for Bryn Hill. Have they pulled all their permits?
So yeah, that's a great question. So all the lots that are in Bryn Hill. Every, are in the process of having a building permit pulled for them right now, or they've already been signed off. And so they pretty much are working just on phase five right now. There might be a few homes and four that they're finishing up and whatnot. But they have submitted building permits for all one hundred lots that are in phase five. And so that is all moving forward, and we also received the building permit for the, the fifty nine unit mixed use project as well. So every lot that's in that project has now had a building permit submitted.
Thank you. Anything else on the building permits and the three J report? Okay, move on to item number ten is Planning Commission comments. Number one is, is this is a new setup? Is this something that the Planning Commission? Likes to see in the future, or do you want to go back to our regular plan? Commissioner Conadel?
We'll have to look around today.
Commissioner Hou?
Either one.
Commissioner Par?
I like it.
Commissioner None again? Yes, there's your answer.
Thank you. Thank you, Professor. Appreciate that.
Commissioner Hou, you worked, I think last time, were going to do some physical checking on alignments across walks.
I haven't done all of it down. I walked the last night. Correll and. Timmerick intersection, they're crooked. And then I still want to know. Why we don't have crosswalks on three thirteenth and north? It's the main entrance to the park. When you go down three thirteenth with all the kids, that's, we don't have crosswalks. It just doesn't make sense to me. I'm not asking for a flashing light, just to put a crosswalk. And that is, that's your main park in that development. That's three thirteenth is a direct shot through. But I'll, I'll finish walking. It's in, I think it's in a. I think it's in three. The third phase where I was picking it all up, because it's not four, but five houses on the very end. And it's a ninety degree intersection. None of them look at each other. It's the strangest thing you'll see. They come up to sidewalks and they don't, they don't line up. So, but that's Timmerick and, Timmerick and Correll Drive. It's a very farthest intersection to the left. I was, I took pictures. I can send you pictures of it.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Commissioner Hou. What I was going to say is, send me your pictures and send me, you know, your concerns in an email. And then what I'm going to do is I'm going to wrap in three J and, and how it works is this is really them. But I, I'd like to be a part of the conversation and then work with you on that. So if you don't mind sending me an email, then we'll just get the conversation a little bit broader. And bring some more people in there that have some answers.
Right down the street some of, but it just, when they, when you're, on the one, I know it's four foot off as you go across. And like I said, if I was handicapped or blind and I was walking across that intersection and hit the curb. It's not in alignment. There's no reason that it's not.
No, so that's, that's why I want to bring those intersections and, and elevate them a little bit and, and find out what happened. Because I know that, you know, we have seen the same thing you have. And, and so it's time to find out why.
Uh, any other planning commission comments? Do we have anything for our ex officio City Council? With that, we'll move on to item eleven for City Council comment. Councilor Pepin?
Thank you so much. I appreciate your efficient meeting. This is, this is one for the record books lately, so thank you so much. And I just wanted to extend an olive branch out and just ask if there's any. Dialogue or messaging you'd like me to take back to council. I know that's one of our priorities right now is trying to really align with each board and commission within the city. I just wanted to create that dialogue now. If there's anything I can take back.
Well, with the new information about the potential rack UGB workshop, I think that was one of our number one priorities. As you heard, there's certain code things that we would like to see moved through. And I think I would recommend that our planning commissioners submit something to staff. And then, and request that it be leased forwarded to it. If not, the next meeting will, whoever's ex officio will pass it on to them. So thanks for being here.
Well, thank you.
All right. All right. With that, we move on to item number twelve is staff comments. Do you have anything else?
Anything additional? I, I just appreciate your last comment that you shared with Councilor Pepin about, you know, if you guys do have issues and topics that you want to address. Don't hesitate bringing them to me. I will raise them up the flagpole with you and try and find things that we can work on. It, it really is that type of partnership where we work together on these things and, and we use the council as kind of the sounding board to let us know where the. Resources and time should be spent to, to fulfill, you know, everybody's concerns and agendas. So thank you for sharing that.
I assume the May fourteenth meeting would be, is it going to be Zoom? I won't be in town, so.
It's, it'll still be Zoom, just like then.
Okay.
Yep.
Steve, what's going on on the red building down here with the swale on the front that I've named Miller Swamp?
Yes, they, they actually got going on their swale a little early. They had not gone through the review with the city on the swale. They, they forgot that they had to do that, and so we had to stop them. But they're just trying to get the property finished to have it open as sisters and.
Sisters and stuff.
Sisters and stuff, yeah.
So why is the swale on that property and not five star?
Pardon?
Why is the swale on that property and not on five star in the corner?
Because that's the property where the use is occurring. It's not five star property. None of that is related to five star.
Apparently, they didn't work out a cooperative agreement.
I have no idea if those folks were talking with one another or whatnot, but they are addressing, you know, their development, their property, and they're setting it up for what they want to do.
So then my other question is, so I come into this city and I buy an existing building or existing business. And I want to open a business in the city, and I ask the city for help. I don't know what I'm doing. And we're into it two and a half years. Something's wrong. Why aren't we helping them?
I have bent over backwards to help them. I have bent over backwards to help them. This is a financial deal. This is all money, right? They're, they're moving forward based upon the finances they have available to implement the project.
So if I buy a business that has a gravel parking lot, can you force me to pay it?
I could. Our, our code does require that. In this situation, I will have it known to you and everybody here. I told them to keep it gravel. I told them I'm going to do everything I can to keep you away from CWS. They didn't want to do that. They chose to go the route they're going. This is their choice.
I just look at two and a half years ago, and it's not open.
Everybody from the previous City Council to the previous City Manager, to myself, to other folks that I've worked with that have been older. Everybody has wondered, why are we not moving on this? They, they asked, they asked the previous council, why do I have to go to CWS and get all this? And I said, look at the decision. We told you, don't do that. But this is how they want to do it.
So if they would have liked to gravel, then they wouldn't have had to go through all this swale or any of that crap?
That's more of a CWS comment, but what I understand from working with CWS, even if you have gravel and you have it packed. To where it is at a certain pack level, they consider that impervious. And you would have to do stormwater, even if you had compact gravel. That's, that's my understanding from what CWS has shared with me. For example, that came up with the lot that's over there at three oh nine in Cottage. I mean, three oh nine in Blanco where the lease sign is, that person wanted to put some compacted gravel down on that lot. And CWS said, you have to do stormwater if you pack it. So he put it down loose. That was the difference.
Yeah, I'll have to, I'll have to. I want to go talk to them and see what the hell they're doing.
It still looks better than the rusty piston.
Yeah, I mean, I know who they are, and I'm just going.
Yeah.
But I do believe you're going to see it going forward. I did get an update from three J, from Brian Feeney, saying he was wrapping up his review of that stormwater system being connected in. So where they have to go on private property and connect into the street system there, that's what's being looked at, how they're making that connection. I understand that that review is pretty much done, so I think you're going to see this budget pushed forward and probably wrap up sooner than later now.
I wonder who designed it.
But. I, I can honestly tell you, we have tried to do everything for these people to get them open. I mean, I've, I've cleared everything out of their way I possibly could. I mean, we went out there, met with them, and told them how not to get to CWS, and they still ended up at CWS.
I mean, it could be the other. CWS was there two days ago. CWS was there two days ago.
Well, they're, they're in Hawaii too.
They, they created nothing but hell when I felt like.
Yeah, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Okay, um, on K-Burn off of Glento. Just to the right, there's like a older house that has, no, it has passing signs and a barn. What's going on with that property?
Were you talking about the GOA property, the, the city property there? Between Pacific and K-Burn?
Yeah, it's K-Burn. They just go right and get, yeah.
Yeah, so that, that property is owned by the city.
Okay.
And it's the property that we're trying to get developed for a potential grocery store. However, that property has some contaminated soils.
Got it.
And so we're working on trying to get some dollars to clean the soils up so the project can go forward. And so right now, we're, we're working through that process of trying to get the soils cleaned up. Yeah.
Anything else on staff comments? All right, is there any other commission business? If not, our next regular meeting will be April, May fourteenth here, six o'clock. And with that.